That's my cab.
Oh, huh, it rolled away.
Is Bill gonna be here?
Fire truck and stuff. Bill.
Budget.
I don't think he's on it.
He isn't.
I thought he's on everything.
Who's the head of?
If my budget committee could sit in one of the front row, that would be great.
They have to sign in first.
We have a definition of what a budget committee can do and not do. I don't know that.
What? What's wrong with them?
No, nothing's wrong.
Oh.
I just. The reason I asked if Bill was here is because in Waldenborough we have a definition of what our budget committee
Yep, right here.
is supposed to do.
Yep, right here, and I thought we could talk about that tonight too, because maybe they, people would want to change that.
To a different.
To include other.
But I think you, I think you can't.
I can't just what?
Just change it.
No, I know we can't just change it.
There are some laws or something.
Some laws.
How's it going?
We ran over this one another time.
How are you doing?
Good.
That's good.
Ready for this?
You're doing?
We could, but it is a process, not just.
Right, but I, I wanted to get their input on it too. Was that okay?
No, yeah, it's okay.
I wasn't changing anything tonight.
I just, Bill is a woman of the history on that, who knows?
I don't think.
I know that he is technically, I think he.
That's an old one.
I do not know.
Wow.
Because it came out to me as a issue of what the budget committee, sometimes they wanted to do something that they couldn't.
Still pushing up, still, still breathing ass, I guess I'm doing all right.
Oh, no, I understand. I have what they can do right here. Hi.
How are you?
Good, really good.
How many do we have on the budget committee?
We're supposed to have nine. We have seven. How are you?
I'm doing all right.
I'm glad.
And you?
I'm good.
You look good.
Well, thank you. You're very kind.
Police department gonna be here?
No, none of the department heads, but Paul's coming, because we know that the million dollar.
Oh.
It's gonna be.
Not as much as I hear about potholes.
Oh, potholes and I have been well acquainted this week.
One of 220 is quite large.
Yeah, yes, I know, thank you.
There was a picture on Facebook.
I know.
It's bleeping large.
Did you not read what I said on Facebook about that in that same post? Please call us, don't put it on Facebook, please.
I know, it's, it just follows mine.
If I don't start, Katie will talk all night.
Katie will talk all night.
Call this meeting to order, Select Board meeting, November 27. Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public hearings tonight, any adjustments to the agenda. Okay? Citizen comments. Select Board comments. Katie.
We're moving right along with our Christmas tree, our public Christmas tree, it's already been, it's been delivered and set up. All we have to do now is put the lights on, and the, the schools and children around town are making pine cone bird seed ornaments to hang on the tree for the winter for the, for the, the birds. So, we have to, we'll be coming up with a date for the lighting ceremony. We'll have music and hot cocoa and cookies for anybody that participates. So, we're moving ahead with the Christmas tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I did, I was just looking to see if they.
Sorry.
Yeah. Well, last meeting, I asked a, a process or procedural question because I didn't know the answer to it, about concerning petitions. And I was very pleased that the answer came to me, that somebody looked it up and got the answer, and that, yes, we do, Maine does have a law, and as long as we have a certain number, 10% of the previous gubernatorial election, no, that number, then yes, we do need to put that, whatever that petition is, on our warrant. Also, that we can modify the language so long as it does not change the intent of the actual petition, which is very similar to our citizens initiative, our referendum statewide process. So, it's very similar to that. And I, I was pleased to have, have the answer, because I really didn't know the answer to that. So, that could make things easier, sometimes you don't need to discuss if, if it's a moot point, then, then that saves people time. So, yeah, it's good to know, it's good to know the answer to that, so I was pleased.
Any other comments from the Select Board?
I, I heard one thing today, I just wanted to pass on. A real estate person said that Waldenborough is the best town to get information, if you're a real estate person, when you come into the office to get that information, that Waldenborough is by far the best town to do that, and because the information is organized, it's accessible, and the person in charge knows just what he's doing and has everything ready. And so, that would go to Darryl, sitting in the back there. That was a compliment towards Darryl that I, I heard today, to pass the mantle. Thank you, Dan.
I think we may have another comment from the audience tonight.
We do.
It's Karen.
Do you want me to introduce myself?
Yes, please. Craig Lewis.
What do you do on Saturday?
I'm supposed to be up front. At the diner in the, in the morning, I talk to a lot of people. They just want to know why the lights don't work on it. They said, yeah, a fluke night, no lights. The light on the telephone pole isn't working out here.
We called CMP about that. I'll be honest, it took us a while, it took me a while to figure out that it's a CMP issue and not an art, art issue. So, we're on their list to have the lights on. That was a Julie issue, I'm gonna be honest with you. Who would've thought?
It's been out for quite a while, I guess.
Yeah, I, actually, at the last recreation committee meeting, Karen Rowan came in my office the next day and told me they were out. So, yes, that's why they're out. That was a Julie, I, we thought, I thought it was a us issue, and it's a CMP issue, because those poles are technically streetlights.
Now, if we ever switch to LED, it'll be our issue.
Yep, yep.
Any more comments from the Select Board or the public? Okay, managers report.
I don't really have that much. The Winslow's Mills Road property, we are working with the homeowners, the auditor was here last week, and that was actually a nice thing, and they will be here the second meeting in June, uh, June, July, uh, January, oh, making that winter go away quick, January to present their audit, the 2017 and 2018 audit. And we filled a patrolman position with a gentleman from Knox County, and we will have a swearing-in ceremony, ceremonial ceremony, on December 11th, first thing, since that's what we do now. And the water agreement is going to be on the next meeting, on the 12th, and the water company's coming to talk about the rate increase, and that's about it. Till I have.
Thank you. Discussion with the budget committee.
Yay, aren't you glad you're here? Craig, where are you?
Craig, okay.
All the others.
Craig, come on here. Come on. So, thanks for coming out, I know this is different, and, yes, I know it's not, you know, we're not following exactly the procedure.
Don't we ever?
Well, I guess everybody does, and I'm just such the rule breaker all the time, so you never know with me. This is a copy of what our policy is. So, the reason you're here is I wanted to kind of set up our schedule, and I would love some input from you guys and gals, on whether or not you guys think this, and girls, think that it would be a good idea to potentially modify this a little bit. As I said last year during our, you know, you don't have to keep following me around taking pictures, I want only my good sides. As we said last year, when I shocked you all, shock and awe, because that's what I like to do, I thought it would be a good idea to get you guys more involved with our capital programming, and also with our debt service and how we handle it. I think that's a really good thing to have you involved in. And I know that's not typically what we wanted you involved in in the past, but I like to think that since Peg Tynan, who is our new finance director as of July 1st, I don't know how many of you remember Peg, and I kind of have taken a little bit of a more proactive approach to this, I think it's really important that you guys are involved in this, and it's a little bit more transparent. At least, I hope that's how you found the last process, transparent. So, I have a calendar here too that I'm handing out, because what I'd like to do is maybe get a few more dates than just the three dates we've done in the past, so that we can chat, and I didn't want anybody having to look on their phones and fumble, so I gave everybody a calendar. The green dates are dates that are, you can't, you can't mean. So, I'm sure you've heard, and as you can tell, we have a packed house with my wonderful fire department. If you follow Facebook, or if you've heard anything, or, or read the newspaper, we brought up buying a new ladder truck, which I know all of you have heard on Budget Committee. So, that big number just about scared the heebie-jeebies out of everybody, it was quite, just quite, quite a shocker. And I get that it is, but there's a rhyme and a reason to that, and I'm gonna bring up the chief at some point tonight to chat a little bit about that. But this is what I think you need to be involved in, and I think it's great that you guys spend a lot of time going over how much oil and how much it is. I could do the operating budget and bring you within 2% like that. You just tell me where you want to be, and I can do it. It's not rocket science, it's budgeting. Rocket science in this town needs to be about the capital programming and the debt. It's not about counting pencils, it's the big stuff. I'm telling you right now, this is the most important thing. Had this approach been what the approach was years ago, say, 2008, when money was half a percent to borrow, we would have been much further along than we are now, and, and, and would have saved a lot of money, had we thought about it. And now, interest rates are higher, things are going to cost more, but you have to have a plan, and you have to have a plan for more than a year. You know, you guys are used to seeing a, a capital plan that sometimes only has a year in advance. Fire Department, I know, Paul, you've planned in advance, but it, there has to be, I want to know 10 years from now, what truck I have to replace. Roads, for us to do the five miles of roads, it's $400,000. That's every year, we know we're gonna spend $400,000. What's the biggest thing today on Facebook? Anybody be on Facebook today, enhance Waldenborough? Mike Strom?
Pothole on 220.
Pothole on 220. That is not my pothole, I wish it was. If I had hot patch, I would've put it in the back of my Maverick Silverado amazing truck, and I would've went out and filled that pothole, even though it's the state's job, because I don't want to hear about it, and I want it fixed. But I can't. So, roads are important. 220 at Old Augusta Road, dangerous intersection. Guess how much money to fix that?
$250.
Right around $250, that's if we do it. 400, if we don't do it. If we have a contractor do it. How do we, you know, we have people coming in, we have Select Board saying we want to fix it, there's no money to fix it. You know, we gotta figure this out. So, I understand, it's not the way we've done it. We'd have to amend that policy to probably broaden your scope. I'd love to have some feedback from you guys, whether you think that's a good idea or not. I personally think it's a fabulous idea, not just because it's mine, but kinda. But you guys, and girls, that's what you have to help me with. That's what I want your help with, that's what I want your input with. When we're having a discussion about buying a million dollar ladder truck, now, and believe me, I'm the one that got all the wonderful emails. I was stopped at Moody's, I was stopped at Hannaford. Hannaford, wonderful place, people love to chat with me. If I go to the store, it should take like five minutes, I'm normally there half an hour, 45 minutes, you never know. Between that and gas stations, you never know who you're gonna meet. So, I have to figure out how to do all of this, and I would love some help, some meaningful help. So, the fire truck, ladder truck, aerial, whatever you want to call it, got a lot of feedback on that. Some of the questions were, do we need it? We haven't had one, why do we need it? There's ones that are in Dimercata, there's ones in. Help me out, Rockland, Tom's team. Well, you know, years ago, my favorite was, years ago, when, and I don't know the name of the, burned, we just threw ladders up and we went in. Okay, and I, I appreciate years ago that we did that. We also have a lot different technology. We have to have this conversation. How do we afford a million dollar fire truck? I'll tell you how we can afford a million dollar fire truck. If the debt service coming off, and what we've been putting away to buy the new fire truck, which is 50 grand a year. How many years at 50 grand a year for a million dollar fire truck do we have to save to buy that fire truck?
20 years.
20 years. That doesn't make sense. We can finance that fire truck, and for the same money that we're paying in the, for the truck that's coming off, plus what we're saving a year, buy the truck. We've waited a long time now for this, because it wasn't included in the budget. There's a 3% built-in increase January 1st. This is what we have to do better. As a town, we have to do better. And it's not the Select Board's issue, or the town manager's issue, or the budget committee's issue, it's our issue. And I think as a group, I think we're all pretty smart, and I think if we work together, we can come up with some really good ways to figure out a lot of these problems. And that's what I want to do, and I hope that you agree with me. Oh, stop making faces at me. You know, if John was here, he'd be singing with me, and you're there just, you know, giving me the old hairy eyeball. So, what I want to do is I'd just like to, I'm gonna give Paul the floor, because the most important issue right now that I want to get talking about, and have meaningful discussion about, hopefully at a meeting in December, is the ladder truck. So, if I can have Paul beep up on up here, because he's a beepopper from way back, and just give you some of the history and some of the needs. Then, I'd like to set up some dates to meet in January, I mean, December, and then January, to chat about some other things. I have some capital information to hand out for you that you can start wrapping your head around. But are you, pretty much, do you think that's a good idea? I mean, on first blush, I know, I'm just kind of grabbing you, but do you understand what I'm trying to accomplish?
I know what you're trying to accomplish, and I commend you for trying to fix a problem that was created a few administrations ago, when they made department heads cut out the capital. Many, many years ago, and this is fact, and I'll go dig up the records if I have to. Lee Smith, every year the capital, every truck had replacement values. Money was punched in. And I believe even, oh, it was the post administration, when they was told, just cut your budgets, cut your budgets, cut your budgets, and what did they do? They cut it out of capital. So, now we're in the point where, here we go.
Here we go.
And it wasn't until a couple of years ago, when we doubled, I think, the fire department's capital from 20 to 40, if I'm correct, Mr. Spencer. So, we're making up for something that.
We are making up, and.
You never should have happened to begin with.
Right. And I agree that we are making up, and we're behind.
Way behind.
I know. So, that's, those are the things that we have to chat about. And I just want to point out, because I heard this yesterday, I went to a resident's house who has an issue with water, and is thinking that it's, it's nothing that we can help her with, but, you know, she kept talking about her taxes, and, and I reminded her, she goes, I don't know what I get for my taxes. And so, I chatted with her about the school, and I, I said, you know, you have to remember, you know, this year my taxes went up. I said, well, Regent aid went on, and that was something that the, the public voted for, you know, and she goes, but here, what do I get for my taxes? And I, I said, you know, we're the last full-service town in Lincoln County. We have fire, we have police, EMS, and police and EMS that are 24/7. And I will tell you, we have, I consistently hear that our emergency services are great, and I do believe that we do have some great emergency services. And it's one of those things, there are emergency services, and the woman said, you know, but I don't use that. Now, she's 84, and I'm sure at some point she's going to use it. It's you're paying for that thing you hope you never need, but you're going to, and when you need it, you want it there quickly. So, I just wanted to point out, that's one of the things that we do have is, you know, we are the last full-service town, we really are. Everybody else kind of takes a break somewhere around that 1 to 5, but we're still here. Even understaffed, we're still here. So, I'm, I'm gonna let Paul chat, because you're probably sick of me, which is okay, I get it, and then I'll come back up.
Actually, before we hear about a fire truck, do we want to discuss the budget committee's involvement in the capital review or planning?
Well, how I think that.
Or is that already assumed that we are going to do that?
Well, I'm kind of already assuming that you're going to do that. I'm kind of already assuming that you're just gonna agree with everything I say, because you love me so much. I don't.
I'll try.
I'm just, I, I really would like you involved, because I think that when you sit down with my department heads, and I'd like to do something a little bit different if we can, I don't want to have the big horseshoe and put the poor department head right there, and kind of, I'd like to have a more intimate gathering when we do the capital. Well, I'm not that granol-y. I'm not that granol-y, but just have a little bit more of an intimate, so that they can really spend some time. What bothered me last year during the process was how much time we spent on the operating budget, and then just breeze through the capital. And that's bass ackwards, and I want to change that. And like I said, change is scary, that's why I gave us, you guys, a copy to look at of the policy. But I do think that, yes, you do, I think it's important that you know what's facing us. I think it's important you know, when Paul talks about the ladder truck, but we're gonna need a ladder truck, we're still gonna need SCBA. You know, you can't replace one for the other. And along with Paul's needs, we have EMS needs, and along with EMS needs, we have $400,000 of roads, and with $400,000 of roads, I have police cars that need to be replaced. And hey, it sounds great, we're gonna go get ourselves a used ladder truck. Where am I gonna put it? Because my building doesn't fit it. So, I'm gonna spend $400,000 renovating a building. For a fire truck, it's gonna cost $600,000, or I could have a million dollar fire truck that fits in the firehouse that's new. So, those are the kind of questions, that's what I want you for. I want you involved in those capital decisions, because those are all things that are important. And these five very intelligent individuals, and the nine of you, that's your job to make these decisions. And I think that you need to be well-versed in them and well-educated in them before you just say yes or no, because it's not a matter of, I don't want my taxes to go up, no. And, and maybe it's been like that, I don't know, but you have to at least listen. And in the end, that might be the decision, is no, I don't want my taxes to go up. But then, if that's the decision, you all should be able to explain that and articulate that to the public in a manner that is well-thought-out and well-reasoned. Because that's, in my opinion, your duty as the budget committee and as the Select Board, is making the best decisions for Waldenborough. This is the. I love coming here every day, because I never know what I'm gonna get. It, it's a great place, and we have so much potential, there's so much change, and, and I truly believe that our tax base is going to grow. In the next five years, we are going to have more spendable income, because our tax base grows, and I know Freeman is over there saying, yes, yes, we need to grow our tax base. It's going to make him very happy. But we have things that we can do as a town and big decisions, so that we can keep growing and keep that taxes from, just keep going up, we have to figure out. And a good capital plan with a good debt service plan is one of the ways we have to do it. We just can't keep saving and taxing the people that are here for something they may never use, you know, and, and that's part of the problem. I love, in my own life, saying, you know what, I'm gonna save that, and I'm gonna buy that eventually. It makes sense in your personal finances. It sometimes doesn't make sense in government or business, because you're never gonna get to that point, and, and guess what? We're at that point, we can't save enough to do what we need to do. Borrowing can be a bad word. If you're just borrowing willy-nilly, it can be terrible. If you do it in a manner with a, a, a plan, and that's what, from what I can tell, Lee had a great plan.
He sure did.
I mean, he really, the book was amazing, drove the department heads crazy. But maybe not so much as he did, but something very similar. We should have a spreadsheet, they should have a spreadsheet, they can just look at and say, oh, look at that, that's what we're gonna be doing. And I'm not gonna say things aren't gonna come up, and we're gonna, gonna have to, to, we're gonna have to be fluid, we're gonna be like a point guard, not like a power forward, we're gonna have to be able to move and adapt, but, you know. Alex, I love it when you're there, back there smiling, it's a good metaphor. My other metaphor is, we're a team, you know, one finger doesn't do much, but a fist does, that's why you need five players playing as a team. Coach K, Duke. Okay, go ahead, Paul. I'm gonna shut down.
Sorry, May.
Yes.
I'm gonna make you happy and agree with basically everything you said there.
See, I knew you were my favorite.
Well, not yet.
You just said bud.
I know.
The purpose of the budget committee has always been a review committee.
I know.
And.
That's why I handed out that document.
And so, adding more people, it sounds like you want more brainstorming or, or discussion and whatnot, in order to formulate the budget, and I don't think that's a bad idea, but the more, the bigger the group you have, the harder it is to nail down details. And so, would you, as a town manager, still be laying out the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not gonna make you do a lot of things. I want you to do the high-level thinking, and I'll do the minutia. Peg and I, we're really good at minutia, and believe me, I will have lots of opinions, you may not want to hear, but you'll probably, you know.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the mechanics of how we're gonna take a group think and turn it into the budget. So, if you're still gonna do that.
The budget is, I'm not worried about the operating budget.
Well, the capital budget.
Right. The capital budget, yeah, we're gonna hear different things. In the end, it'll be the budget that I present to you guys in the end to.
Okay.
To, that part of the budget adoption isn't going to change. I'm still, it's still gonna be the town manager presenting you a budget that you have to review. But before that, I think it's really important that you know what you're reviewing, and honestly, two meetings, that's not enough to make an informed decision. I'm sorry, and I know I'm asking you to commit to more time that you probably didn't want to commit to. If I make you sue, will you?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a good deal.
It's all about consensus building on one level.
Right.
And we don't know what Julie's gonna give us at this point, none of us do. I haven't seen any capital budgets for quite a while, but we do need to look at it, and if we can build consensus around it and establish priorities, that accomplishes a lot.
Yeah.
It really does.
It does.
And with everybody involved in that process, it's gonna be a very much healthier process than the one we've had, I think.
I think it's more transparent too. I think it's more transparent, too. I think it's very hard and I think the, the department heads struggle, not struggle because they're actually very good at what they do, but I think they, they fret for whatever reason, whether it's past experiences. I think they fret. And, and I will tell you, no one was more concerned about standing before the town than Paul, asking for a million-dollar fire truck. That man right there, agonized over this, looked at everything he could look at. John Degel's the same way, you know? John comes in and he's so cheap, sometimes he sweeps, you know? And I mean that in a loving way. I really do. But we really need to, we, we really need to, there's, there's, these department heads truly, and Richard Lash, truly look at and care about what effect it has. And they put a lot of time and energy into that part of the budget and then it just, it's kind of just an afterthought. So, I, I want to change that dynamic. Not that the operating's not important, but I can explain the operating to you guys in one night. It's, it's not, like I said, it's not rocket science. And now that we have more use of the computer system, Trio System, Peg and I have a much better idea where we are. And we can tell you where we could cut or where we could use to give. And I don't, I also don't want the department heads to still just like repeat, "This is what we spent last year, so this is what we're gonna spend." I believe that the budget, I believe overall that your, your amount stays the same, but where you spend it fluctuates a lot. So, if, if you're gonna have a $50,000 budget, and that's pretty much where you're running within a couple percentages, I, I get that. But you're not always gonna spend the same on gas as electric as this, so you gotta have some flexibility. That's easy. The capital and the debt is the, is the problem. Anything else before I have Paul?
On your more meetings, great idea. And I can remember listening to Craig complain for years about getting the book more than a couple days before that first meeting.
Oh, you're gonna have the book much earlier.
That's the other thing, that's another issue I know the Budget Committee's always had to deal with. They've always had to-
And last year it was really bad because I blew up this, I blew up, I blew up the budget two days before and, yeah, I know, it was my fault.
I mean, you stood up, so I just got my book. I've heard you say that for years.
You guys were very, and girls, were very patient with me last year when I changed everything.
Trial basis is over.
Oh, believe me, I know the honeymoon is over. Trust me. John called me today. John Higgins could not be here tonight, he wanted to be here tonight. He called me and he told me, he was, you know, gonna keep an eye on me. He's like, "It's a shame, we don't have live stream, I'd be there, you know, yelling at you through the TV." So, it's okay. You ready, Paul? Step on up, Chief Extraordinaire.
I want to start out by saying I completely support this process, this idea. And I wish that we'd been doing it three years ago when we initially started this conversation about this ladder truck back then. If we had done some of this groundwork that we're talking about now, it wouldn't be such a shock to everybody, even though it's been in your town report for three years in a row that this was coming. So, it's not, it shouldn't be a surprise for anybody. I think we can save a lot of money in the town budget by printing one town report. Because everybody that didn't stop Julie in the grocery store or the gas station or at Moody's stopped me. I've met a lot of people in the last month or so. And when the picture, my picture in the Bangor Daily was bigger than the one in the Lincoln County News all over this ladder truck, I heard about it in Presque Isle. So, this, this has been a little fretful, this process. And so, I very much welcome this change and hope that all of you will embrace it. Because Billy's absolutely right. We had a process that was in place and then for one reason or another, it was, it was taken away. Some of the questions that I've been faced, first of all, I want to thank everybody, any citizen that stopped to talk to me or Julie or any of the firemen, and not just the ones that were running on Facebook or on social media, the ones that stopped me, I really appreciate it. Because we got a chance to talk and I was able to explain everything to them. Most everybody came around and understood. Some, I wasn't gonna change their mind no matter what I said. But I do appreciate any citizen that came and spoke to us, I really do. I don't want to repeat. I mean, I've, I've told you the needs for the ladder truck for three years. I've here, a few months ago, I stood here, presented everything to you folks, so I don't want to keep, keep repeating it. Some of the questions that have been asked of me over the, the past several weeks, "Why do we need a ladder truck for one building in town?" People think this ladder truck is just to protect the sprout block. We probably will never put a ladder truck up to the sprout block. But just a few weeks ago, we were at Clint Collinmore's house with his children and grandchildren inside. One of our youngest, most fit firefighters, also one of the tallest, was standing on his tiptoes trying to get to the chimney balancing on the peak of your house. How tall's your house? Story and a half.
Oh, yeah.
So, people that are saying that we only have one building in town, that is completely false. I live probably as close to this building other than Mrs. Minzy. I probably live as all tabbed in, and he lives even closer. But just the distance from here to my house, within a mile of this station, when you go home tonight, look at the metal roofs, look at just the heights of some of these old houses. Mr. Butler and some of the other folks here in town have covered their roofs with solar panels. We can't put a firefighter anywhere near those. They're energized. There, there's a lot more to it than, than just the sprout block and, and those things. I hear about using the trucks from the other towns and we've spoken about that. Mrs. Minzy, what happens to a fire every 60 seconds?
Oh, I watched it. It's, yes, it just-
Every 60 seconds, it doubles.
Yeah.
It doubles in size.
I just reviewed the pictures of the sprout block and they had the times written on them.
Oh, on the-
On my camera.
Reed, on the Reed.
Yeah, the, uh, that's what I meant, the Reed Mansion, yeah. It was amazing. And I have a two-and-a-half-story house. Right, isn't that what the fire, the ladder truck is?
Yeah.
Good for them.
The point I was trying to make is that it takes about seven minutes for a firefighter to respond to the station. Another two to three minutes, you got a truck on the road. And then whatever travel time it takes, we're waiting for a ladder truck to come from Damroskata or from Thomaston easily. Let's be conservative, 15 minutes, 20 minutes? What's gonna happen to the size of that fire in that amount of time? Again, I don't want to repeat myself. I'm happy to answer any questions, continue to answer questions. Peg's got our financial stuff. And those of you who haven't met Peg and haven't worked with Peg, she's worth every penny and 10 times more than you folks pay her. It's been an absolute wonderful thing to have her, have her here. So, I'm very grateful for the work that she's done and made our jobs much more doable, especially for me who doesn't work here. I have to come in and do my stuff and then go back to work. And her help has been invaluable, so I'm very grateful.
Well, are there any alternatives to a ladder truck to get aerial capacity like using a bucket truck? I'm not a firefighter, so I don't know how things work on a fire scene, but is there any other way to get access to a building?
Not, not to the extent that a ladder truck would be. There are levels above the ladder truck. Like our dream, any firefighter here would love to have a tower that has the big box, I can put three firefighters on the end of it. It's like an elevator that goes up. We'd love it.
Is that like a boom truck?
No, it's like a ladder truck with a big basket on the end of it.
Like a-
But it costs, the cost is prohibitive and the size of it is just prohibitive.
Is there anything not as good as a ladder truck, but that's offered some functionality that is an option for less money?
I'm not, does anybody else know of any? There used to be telesquirts years ago, but person couldn't go up there. That was more of a boom that had water on it, but not to, not to get people up.
And a boom truck isn't practical for using in fire?
I'm not aware of anybody using boom trucks. And one thing, too.
Water itself.
Tell them why you don't buy a used truck. Tell these people why you don't buy a used one.
Somebody else's headache.
There's several reasons. The obvious answer why you, Craig just asked about, you know, why we don't buy a used one. The obvious one is why is somebody else getting rid of it? You know, we get somebody else's, we get somebody else's problems, the first thing. For us, when it comes to ladder trucks, this technology that we're sharing, we just started looking at probably seven, eight years ago. This is the first one, that's a 100-foot ladder, which is what we have currently, that's on a single axle, which reduces the size of the truck. The second that it came that evening, we had it here, one of the things I insisted on doing was driving that truck up Marble Avenue. The houses that we have up on these narrow streets, that truck maneuvered that corner as well as our personal cars would. The wheelbase is very small. The overall length of the truck is small. Julie spoke about it fitting in the station.
It fit.
Fairly.
It fit.
And if we go with a used truck and we end up with a tandem axle truck and there's, they're out there. For $400,000, $600,000, we can, we can get one, but then we have to retrofit the station to fit it. And we're back to where we are with a 15-year life of it, just like the last three ladder trucks that we've had.
How long would this last, us Paul?
I'm, I'm projecting 40 years.
40 years. Thank you.
And the reason we, we waited, and I said this before, the reason we waited on this wasn't because the need wasn't there, but it was because we did not want to affect the mill rate. And I wanted to wait till Engine 4 was done to do it. So, the, the waiting was risk on your fire chief's part, taking a chance.
Question. We had talked about having someone come in to look us over and to look at the configuration of the equipment we do have and to add their thoughts to those that we've already listened to. Has any progress been made on that?
Well, one thing I did was I contacted ISO for them and just asked if the town of Waldboro met the requirements for a ladder for ISO. I got a very generic answer that was yes. There was five or more buildings that would require a ladder truck in the town of Waldboro. So, it was a basic yes. What they would not tell me that I wanted was I want to know how much our ISO rating is gonna decrease because of not having one. And they would not do that. That asked, is a part of a survey and they'd do the whole survey. Once we didn't have it, they wouldn't say.
I was, I was referring, I was referring more to the composition of-
If you have a professional, as the one gentleman suggested during that meeting, come in. It's anywhere between $8,000 and $15,000 to have somebody come in and do an evaluation of that.
Well, on a million-dollar ticket, that may not be such a bad idea.
Well, the problem being is that you still, I guess your, your question is, could you replace, if you have a ladder, then do you lose one of the other engines? That's what you would do? That's what you're thinking?
Well, I'm not thinking anything. But that is one possibility or alternative that comes to light. You said we're gonna have to replace one of the other trucks seven years from now, right?
I'm hoping 10, but to be realistic.
Yep.
I'm gonna, it's a 1989 and so I'm gonna rec, I'm hoping for 10.
Well, the way you guys take care of it, you'll probably get it.
The night that we, and again, you know, do you want to spend $8,000 to $15,000 to answer a question that maybe you know the answer to already? That's, that's, that's a question that's, you know, that's, that's-
I'm worried over waiting until January because the cost of this truck's gonna go up $30,000 to $40,000. I'm worried over that. I don't even, I mean, adding $8,000 to $15,000 on top of that is gonna worry me even more.
The grant application we put in.
We put it in. And I'm gonna be honest with you, it, it's, you know, ladder trucks are hard, you know? That might take us three rounds, which is three years. But we put it in.
If we've already bought it, are we still owing it?
Well, as long as we've not taken delivery on it.
Well, we're not gonna wait three years to take delivery, are we?
No, but I'm just saying, if we get it this round, we've ordered it, it's gonna take a year to build, then technically, yes, we can still, as long as we don't take delivery on it.
When do you find out on the grant? What's the date?
Oh, we, we could be into July of next year.
I mean, they usually have a period where they'll-
They have a period, but they don't follow it. It's normally, I'm gonna say July of 2019 will know. Could be before. This last one that we didn't get, they told us and there were still more rounds to go, so, you know, we might know early. But-
Yeah, it was my question.
Great minds think alike, aren't they?
I have a question. I don't see any argument against getting a ladder truck other than the cost, so can you lay out what the cost is and how it would affect the budget every year, what you're, what you would propose for financing or, you know, annual payments?
I can tell you what my thought was and then Peg and Julie can give you exact numbers. We were paying roughly $58,000 in principal on Engine 4, roughly $3,000 in interest on Engine 4 each year. And with the $50,000 that was going into the capital comes about $111,000. On a 10-year loan or lease purchase with the ladder truck, the payment would be $110,000. Wish I was brave enough to stand here and say, "Your taxes are gonna go down if you buy this ladder truck," but I don't dare do that. But my goal has always been to try not to affect the mill rate. I don't want an increase in the mill rate.
At 15, though.
At 15?
At 15 years.
What is it at 10?
At 10, it's $110,000 and at 15, it's $82,000.
Yeah, I wanted it at 110.
Because you want to pay less interest.
I want to pay less interest and I don't, and we know what's coming 10 years down the road. So, I don't want to saddle the town 10 years from now.
But the nice thing is too, is we do the lease purchase, we can get that first year and then we can go through MMA to the bond bank and get financing. And that's a lower interest rate than going through Pierce Financing. So, you, there's no pre-penalty pay, there's no penalty for pre-pay. That's what I was thinking. It's not what my brain, what my mouth-
If we go through the Pierce Financing, then we, they consider it being 100% paid in full. That's another discount that we were able to take advantage.
Pierce is the-
Manufacturer.
Well, I agree with, with Waldmore. I don't think there's any question that we need a ladder truck. I mean, I'd hate to see someone go on my roof and there's snow on it, not to mention tiptilling on the eve just trying to look over the chimney.
Tilt through the tulips.
That isn't atypical. I mean, we've seen chimney fires on Friendship Road. Just about every winter, there's a chimney fire somewhere. And these are lives and bodies that can get hurt while they're trying to help people out. So, I, there's a way of, of making it palatable financially. I, yeah.
Dale, do you have anything you want to say or add?
I would just like to say that it, it has a lot to do with the safety, as you've mentioned. And I'm Dale Smith, I'm sorry, Washington, we're the Delaware Fire Chief. And that, you know, the foot of snow Paul talked about last time to go onto a roof, to me, that's less dangerous than if you have a dusting or wet metal roof. I challenge you to get up my roof, I got a metal roof. I challenge you to get up the one that's wet. When we had the fire at the brewery, okay, that night, the temperature dropped. The only reason we stayed on the roof, we were resting up against a metal chimney so we wouldn't fall off, otherwise we would have slipped right off. So, just that stuff and be able to get the angle and put out the fire in chimneys, elevated platforms for the fire, the re-fire, would have been nice to have an elevated platform there first off to never get in the middle. So, I, I, I think it's a, it's a must we have, not a must, it's a need we need for the citizens of the town and the safety of the firefighters. So, I would strongly- would strongly urge that we seriously consider this to do. Being a firefighter, I guess, I would prejudice it. It's a nice apparatus, and Paul worked really hard to keep it under a million dollars. Because we could well over it easily. Thanks.
Do you know, Paul, you said that we have more than five. Do you know, do you have an idea of the number of houses in Waldeboro that would require?
You know, quite a while ago, I sat down with Daryl, and we don't know, I wouldn't have thought up at Clint's house. I've been by Clint's house a million times.
Yeah.
Never would have thought until I watched Kelvin hanging off the eve up there, when you realize it, so. To stand here, I just don't want to get, I don't want to make stuff up. So I don't know. There's a lot.
What is, what's the, well, is there general criteria? Now, you have, you have a one and a half street home?
Yeah.
Yeah. What is the general criteria for the, you know, the house that you would must use a, a ladder truck like that?
Not written down. There isn't. And as far as ISO goes, they told me that there were five or more buildings that were in there. So it was a gen, everything was very general with them. They wouldn't give me anything specific that I wanted. Every situation, if his chimney was a foot shorter, we could have used ground ladders and a roof ladder, which is what we did do.
Yeah. Well, somebody, somebody mentioned that the other day when they, somebody brought up the fire truck. And they said, well, how many, how many houses would need a fire truck? And the other person said, only takes one.
That's, that's the truth.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing, a lot of them old houses like mine, they had very shaft roofs. I mean, nothing, nothing stays on them. Makes it even more. Billy knows, John, it's wicked shaft roof.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
See, I know, Paul's talked about, people talking about the sprawl block, but in this town, we've used a ladder truck for a church fire, a steeple fire in this town. How many churches you got in this town? And also Hanaford with that one. So these, these people that say just for one building, a sprawl block, they're not even looking across the street at that building complex and the churches. And heaven forbid, and I don't think he's going to put anybody down the button factory, but if he does, that's a whole different story.
But there are, there were people this summer living in the button factory.
Oh, wow, right, squatters.
Well, but, but still.
They could have still started.
But Billy brought up a good point, and I meant to say that last time I was here because Mrs. Minzy shared her poster from the congregational church, their fundraiser that they're doing. And I should have said that night, that poster wouldn't even be necessary if the town of Waldeboro didn't have a ladder truck. Because in April of nineteen ninety-three, that church was struck by lightning, and the firemen in Waldeboro kept the fire in the steeple from coming down in the building because they had a ladder truck and could get to the fire. So there's one historical building in town that wouldn't be here today if the town didn't have it, so.
Well, I have you captive, and I have a lot of your department members. That brewery fire was a great save. And I talk to them frequently, and I will tell you, you have no bigger fans in this town than the Adale Wives folks. They just think the world of you. And, and I just wanted to say that was, every time I see them, they mention how great you are.
They announced that at a Waldeboro Business Association meeting when they gave a tour of their brewery. They made that announcement how you saved them.
You saved them. It's pretty cool.
We're glad they're there.
Thanks, Paul. So if, um, do you guys all have your calendars? I was hoping we could pick some dates in December.
These are the dates?
The green, the green are dates we are not available, except for the eleventh and the twenty-fifth, which we have scheduled for select board meetings. But our select board meetings in December, by our December eleventh meeting is packed, so we can't do it that date.
We could meet on the tenth.
How does everybody feel about the tenth?
Good.
Are these meetings at six?
Six, yes.
Would you rather have it at a different time? Six o'clock work okay?
Six is good.
Yep.
Oh, we have pens. Peg has a pen. She'll bring me a pen.
She always has those.
Budget's going up because I got to give you an ink pen?
No, we actually, we actually steal them from the bank.
No, these are super, super cheap.
Oh.
Liam buys, they're rejects.
They're rejects.
So we're going to be the tenth at six o'clock?
Tenth at six o'clock.
With a select board, right?
Yes, budget committee and select board if you feel like it. I mean, I mean, we'll take who we can get. We're not, we're not expecting to get everybody a fourth. And I, I'm assuming that once we get into those next weeks, that's Christmas, and nobody's going to want to do anything. But let's go to January. If we could do, make, the tenth?
Keep everything to tenth. Keep this on a summer.
The Thursday night, January.
Oh, yeah.
If we could do the tenth and the twenty-fourth, that would be great. And that will give us a good basis going forward, how much we have done, and then we can always pick more later. I'd like to get you the budget books by the first week in, in February. Well, if Peg and I can do that, because it's not me, it's really Peg and I, we're a team. We're like freaking crack. Well, there's, no, but we're literally two. And if you listen to Alice's Restaurant, they'll think we're just strange, and they won't like us. But we want to be a movement, is what we want to be. We want to be the budget movement committee. I don't know, I'll think of something. But I'll have a good song for you. Don't worry.
Could I suggest we have a backup date in January? Because I haven't, I haven't seen a month of January where we haven't had to cancel a meeting because of a storm.
How about the seventeenth?
Seventeenth is a fallback?
Yep. Now, as I'm doing, this doesn't mean that if we get things done earlier, because John Degel is, John, the John Degel, as most of you know, was always my favorite child. He's just a great guy, and he and I always got along really well. I'm having a feeling that when I tell him he has to have his budget into me by February, he's going to be really angry with me. But we're going to do our very best. So as I get things in, I'll clue everybody in. And just really, if we could have at the December meeting, a discussion about, and I'll come up with some language to the policy, even if we have to call you something different, if it doesn't fit in with the plan, I, I, I don't see any harm in participation, as long as how we do the actual budget process stays the same. But...
It could be a finance committee.
It could be a finance.
And that's what I proposed a while ago, and Bill Budget had a meltdown on me.
Well, again, but there's, we have to have, I, I think, if we can have something like the Marijuana Committee, or the Communications Technology Committee, or all the other committees that we've had, Silvania Task Force, there's got to be something that helps with the finance. I mean, it's, it's, it's not that we're, we're not turning our checkbook loose to you guys. And I, I get where it gets to be a little complicated, but I do think that there's ways that we can, there's ways that we can accomplish the same thing. And you know what? And if there isn't, there should be. And then we need to go up and change the law. There's nothing wrong with changing laws. Just takes a movement.
Or else you just need to change, make a committee and give it a different name, I think.
Yeah, right. But let's, we'll see what we can do.
Or if we're just advising, then...
Well, it's Christmas. You could be elves.
Could be. But if, if the budget committee is just invited to have input on the capital budget, maybe we don't have to change anything, and we still operate in a, in a review fashion
We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
Pre-budget.
Yeah.
Build it up.
Well, it would be nice. And I, see, here's the thing. So like, if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, or, you know, somebody else is sitting in my seat, I'd like to think that what I leave behind has some meaning. So I, I kind of, if we can make it a, a permanent thing, that way it's a little bit harder for people to change when the whims change. That's always been my feeling is, I'm a kind of keep it loose person until, but if we're really doing something meaningful, let's, let's make it a little hard for the people who come after to change it.
I understand. We don't have a reserve study.
We have, yeah. No. Geez, Arvin, you're asking for all these good things. I haven't been here long enough to give you those things. We're getting there. No, I know. I'm new too. Year and a half. Honeymoon's over. Craig will tell you. I made you laugh, though. You haven't yelled at me yet.
I haven't yelled at you. Although I want my lights working over here.
Um, that was totally a Julie boo-boo. I'm taking a hint for that.
Stop marketing boo-boos down.
I know. It's okay. We'll be disciplined. I know.
Are we going into February with any meetings?
Well, we're going to wait to see how far we get into January. So I will, does everybody like that I mailed them, or do you want me to text you or email you? Would you prefer communication? Email? Email?
Who are we missing?
We are missing...
Bill Blodgett.
No, Bill Blodgett is not on anymore. It is Susan Price, Deb Talu.
Higgins.
Susan's not on.
Higgins. She's not?
No, she didn't run.
It's on our thing. Then it, then that's not, okay.
Susan was just a one-year.
Oh, okay. Well, then it's Deb Talu and John Higgins.
What are we going to do without Bill Blodgett?
Some, a new chair?
Somebody's going to have to be in the new chair.
Paul, Paul, would you say something?
I was wondering how are, if you were going to move forward?
You're going to be here on December tenth.
Because I'm very, like I said, I'm very concerned with...
You're here on December tenth, buddy. So you better not schedule any deaths that day. Or fires. Well, thank you, guys. If you want to stay, we really do have fun at these meetings.
Before they go, could I be introduced to those two last gentlemen? Because I don't know who they are.
This is, this is Arvin Rowan.
Okay. Yep.
And John?
John Keller.
Okay.
I knew that. You didn't have to tell me.
He does that.
That's Bill Maxwell?
Yeah, I know. I know the rest.
Craig Lewis.
I know the rest. I just didn't know those two.
Val Scove.
Yep. Good.
His dad is amazing man. Just so you know. He's a sweetie pie.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Shall we move on?
Thanks for indulging me. I appreciate it.
Soup next time?
I will make soup next time. I promise. What would we like? I can make chicken corn chowder, but I was told chicken ruins corn chowder. So I could make corn chowder, or I could make vegetable beef soup, or I could make vegetable, I could make venison stew.
That sounds good, but I'm not fussy.
Okay.
Anything, anything but liver.
Yeah.
Nobody wanted to stay? You're, you're free to go. Go be free with your family.
We have motion on the consent calendar, please?
Think Katie. It's all over it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so more.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, all business. Select board, subcommittee discussion.
So I'm really hoping that you're going to be as open-minded about this as my budget committee was. So are we, like, thinking subcommittees are cool?
Can we have some already?
We have a few, at least two.
Why not have a few more?
Well, it's just that I think I personally like having, be a benefit of having two of you with me when I'm doing certain things.
Does it have to be a committee? Can it just be two people who volunteer, or step up and say?
It could. I like, but there's certain things, like for finance, I'd like to have, like, the same people. For negotiations, I want to have the same people.
Well, you have that.
Or you, you just think I should keep those as we need them and ask for volunteers when I need help. So like the YMCA, I have you and Jan now. So just do that. Instead of making them formal subcommittees, you're saying make them volunteer.
So, tell me the name. It's not a YMCA committee, right?
It's the YMCA Miles Health.
It's a health thing, not, when I, when I hear YMCA, I'm thinking about the gym.
Well, it's all those things technically.
But that, but that's a piece of the health and wellness.
That's a piece of the health and wellness.
But the bigger picture is what we're looking at.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. I was thinking more in health lines and wellness than, got it, gotcha.
Was there anything else you had in mind, other than finance and YMCA miles?
I was thinking public safety.
Okay.
Because I think that's important.
I think Katie would be on that. She would like that.
Public safety. Any other volunteer other than Katie for public safety?
Wow. Did you see that? I was nominated, and I didn't even say anything. Yes, I'll do it.
Okay. Somebody want to help out Katie?
Sorry, I can do it by myself.
Nobody loves Katie anymore.
I would do that to help Katie.
Okay.
The, the committee I was thinking about was like a community services committee. When I was down the shipyard, we was working with the Navy and people from the shipyard. And we had a, it was called a community services committee, and a bunch of different people had to do a little bit of training. But you, you have, we had people in the shipyard, you had people in this town, they have issues. They don't necessarily want to talk to any of us. But if we had a, like a pamphlet or something like we had then to help these people, this is where you can go, or this is what you can do. It might be the wrong term for it, but I think that thing is the same. So, I don't know. It's something I was just considering, you know, talking. I wanted to bring it up to you. I thought it's quite important. Drugs, alcohol, that's, that was all wrapped into that.
Into that committee.
Yeah. And people wouldn't necessarily go up to a supervisor or something, but they may, a coworker, say, you know, might save a person's life or something.
But isn't that kind of wrapped up into the YMCA thing?
Well, okay, it could be. That's good.
That's kind of where that was directed towards, I believe.
Were you looking at needs, other type of needs too, besides health needs?
Yeah. Maybe that can be a part of the whole thing. I just, I just like to say it's
I was thinking of the Philbrook Fund too, which sort of acts as a committee that addresses some of those concerns we're talking about.
Except you have to come to, yeah.
Yeah, you do.
That, I think what I, I might be wrong, but I thought what you were saying is someone to let people know that there's a Philbrook committee, there's a, a this, there's a...
So you want a pamphlet?
Yeah, maybe.
I think, maybe for Daryl to hand out or something? Is it, would that be, is that what you're looking for? Because they have to come to Daryl to get to the Philbrook Foundation and all that other stuff. So if he had something to hand them?
It was brought to my attention recently by someone in town that even if we had something on the website for, under resources for something like that, that might be a good idea.
Resources, that's probably the word I was looking for. Person who wouldn't go.
Community resources.
So that the, the person could get the resources without have to coming to a person...
I'm not trying to put any more on Daryl's plate, but I just, somebody comes in.
We love you, Daryl.
It does fit though.
Well, we all, we also have places out here in the hallway that we could put pamphlets.
Okay, you can do that.
As well.
Sounds like a plan.
The library has a book of resources that might be, or looking at, yeah.
So, we won't have any formal subcommittees. We'll just, as the needs arise, I'll just ask for volunteers.
Yeah. So we have one, like, in the health one, that's Bob and me, right?
Bob and you.
And?
Finance is Bob and Abden.
Oh, okay.
And public safety is Katie and Clint.
And the union stuff?
Is you. Is you and Abden. And you are also, you and Abden are also the interview committee.
And what's that last one we said? Katie, what's the one?
Public safety. Katie and Clint. Okay. Well, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Makes my life a little easier.
New business. Proceed to the final execution replacement on the June 2019 warrant. I, I just wanna ask if there's a motion we can put on the table in a second and then discuss it if we need to.
Did we get a copy of it?
I did.
It's in your packet.
Yep. Handwritten?
Handwritten. I didn't get it.
It was in the first, it was in the first agenda that Julie sent out.
Oh, because I didn't get it.
I didn't, no.
Well, we can just postpone this to December, right?
Well, no, I sent it to them. I did.
What I have, well, let me see if this is, this isn't from you, but I did find in my old stuff that handwritten.
I think, yeah, it's this handwritten one.
I took mine up here, so nothing's it.
I can go, I don't mind, I can go get a copy of it. No, that's not it.
Okay, then.
I'll go get it.
All right. This is handwritten.
Yeah. Why don't we, no.
But I was hoping it would need some changes.
I do have, if we go to 10.2, and then I'll go do that, so I don't hold you guys up.
11.2?
10.2.
10.2.
So I talked to MMA about the West Waldboro Community Center.
11.2.
There's no 10.2. Did we have that?
That's what I was saying.
There is no 10.
There's 10 right here. 10, 1.
And an 11. I don't see a 10 on that.
There's 11.2.
Right on the bottom.
Oh, they're 212, sorry.
What? Right here. 10. What are you talking about?
You guys got one agenda. Mine's all 11s.
This I just picked up in my packet.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
How old can it be?
Anyway, okay. The West Waldboro Community Center, we thought had to go on the warrant. So it was a donation from the, well, somehow we got it from a nonprofit. And it became ours, and we gave it to West Waldboro, and then that was a nonprofit, and they're giving us back, and we're going to give it to the Historical Society. Because it's a nonprofit, and because there's been no money exchanged, we can give it to the Historical Society by action of the Select Board, which you've already taken, without putting it on the warrant. It's not a, it's not a tax, um, it's not a...
It's not a, you're not raising money for anything.
We're not raising money for anything, and it's... It's not a twack, twack, tax-acquired property. So we do not have to put it on the warrant.
They have to give the dollar back?
They have to give the, we, we haven't technically gotten the dollar, so they do not. So they can, they can take it. We just have to do it.
Do we need, do we need a motion and a vote of the Select Board?
You already did that.
We did that already.
You did that already.
So it does not have to go on.
It does not have to go.
Okay. That's good. That makes it...
So that was really easy. Now you can start talking about the LED lights, and I will go get...
You'll go get that.
Right, because you're, you're well-versed on the LED lights, and I'll go get that.
So...
I read that.
We've kinda been waiting for the, um, the Subcommittee on LED to, to meet, and they haven't met yet. And the clock is ticking. So we had to discuss the idea of our just going ahead to authorize Julie to sit down and start negotiating with them, and using the, the information she gets from the committee, if, if it's helpful to her during that discussion. And then we'd get this thing going, because we've been sitting on it now since mid-September. The last time we went out to bid for it, we got no bids.
Wow. Not even the people who originally...
Well, they, they'd already submitted their proposal, they didn't, they would've just submitted the same proposal.
Okay, but there's, are they still in the...
They're still in it.
In the running, okay. So I came to that presentation.
Okay.
So do you need a motion for her to do that?
Yeah, we do need a motion to authorize Julie to proceed with discussions with the, it's called Real, Real Term.
I saw Move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, good. And we'll just wait for Julie to bring that, uh... If I can find it, I can read it to you.
So we're going back to 11.1.
Yep.
Didn't, didn't you just say earlier, Jan, that we have to submit this? Have to put it on the warrant?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't think we did, but...
Yep. Yes, we do, yeah. Yep, we do.
We have to.
State law says we do. If they have 10% of the previous gubernatorial election numbers...
Even though we have it, even though we have a fireworks order.
This is...
This is...
This is a petition, though, it's not an ordinance.
I understand. But it's to change...
It changes the way the ordinance is done.
If it passes.
Okay, new one to me.
Want me to read it to you? Sorry, Freeman?
I think generally you write about petitions, but I hope to present to you within maybe the next meeting. It's not an absolute requirement. I'm not talking about this petition, but there are certain circumstances in...
There are rules.
In main law, where you have discretion to not put a petition.
Right, they, they have to meet certain criteria. Like, I think there are three criteria. But I have the actual whatever thing from the state that says that they, if, if they meet the, well, the three criteria, then it, then it does need to go on. And this guy had met those.
You wanna note the wording?
Yes, please.
It says, "We the undersigned residents of Waldboro..."
Oh, here it is, here. We have it.
Okay, good.
Did you get one?
Well, it's a lot shorter than...
Yeah.
I was gonna say, this is...
You want it, Katie?
It says, "We the undersigned residents of Waldboro, Maine, do petition the Board of Select to declare the Waldboro Consumer Fireworks Ordinance currently in effect to be null and void and replace it with one that prohibits sale, ownership, and discharge of consumer fireworks in Waldboro. Aerial fireworks displays for public viewing set off by nonprofit organizations will be allowed between 8:30 PM and 10:00 PM on Waldboro Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and New Year's Eve by written permit." Pretty straightforward.
And we don't have all the names here.
Well, they're right here. I didn't wanna copy the whole...
Oh, good.
I'd entertain a motion. Put it on the June warrant.
I asked MMA if he even had to do that, because it's, if, if you have to do it, you have to do it. They didn't answer me that.
Yeah. I don't think it's deserved to do it. We're not endorsing it, we're simply voting to put it on the warrant. That's all we're doing.
Make a motion to, uh, put this on the warrant.
I'll second it.
Any, any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. What bothers me a little bit about this is, I saw the email that you got, Bob, is what made him, made the, the petitioner think that we weren't gonna put it on?
I asked that question.
And that bothers me more than anything about this whole process.
I asked that question.
What made him think that? Because we never said that we weren't. We just wanted to see the language.
You're right.
And that bothers me.
I, I asked that question because I agree. I said, what made, what made him think? It was the article in the Lincoln County News.
And help from, well...
I thought it, I thought...
I'm going there. I'm going there.
I thought it was me, because I asked.
We're talking about the petition.
Yeah, I asked, I had somebody ask too.
It's steep and restrictive to the petition. Is there any further discussion of the, of the, of the motion we have on the table at this point?
Well, yes, just, just one last thing, just so everyone understands. Jan says we have to do this.
Well, this is, according to this, we have to.
Well, there's more than just...
But there, there's some, there are qualifications that a person has to meet in order for it. And otherwise, this is...
There's, there's nothing in the law that said, that prohibits us from doing this. It meets the requirements of a petition.
The, I have, no. See? I can't. I can't not. That email that was circulated to the Select Board from the representative-elect of Angelo's, who apparently we now take legal advice from.
I didn't get an email.
Well...
Did you get an email?
Anyway... There's... I have deep concerns when an email is sent to the Select Board characterizing me in a manner in which it was characterized, and stating that in some way I was infringing upon Mr. Perkins' rights, or someone had to come make sure that I was doing my job. I don't like to be used as a political pawn. And I don't allow myself to be used as a political pawn. And I don't exactly know what's going on here, but I think I have a pretty good idea. And I have to say I'm uncomfortable with all of this, but you, I have no problem with you putting this on.